Mr. Chairman.
Just set them out there on the counter. The House will please come to order. We're still got a few folks walking in. Chairman Wilson, you'd like to make a have a privilege, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, privilege of the floor.
Please.
Um, colleagues, I received a sort of a stack here of stapled information about vaccines and ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine and immunity and whatnot. And so if you're interested in it, rather than put them in the mailbox, I'm just going to put them in a stack out there and you're welcome to take a look.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Wilson. Representative Fortner, did you have a query for the for the chairman?
No, Mr. Chairman, I was just making sure that you could check to see if my hands are working here on my screen for me, if you would, please.
I see your bright yellow hand up in the air.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure. All right, members, we'll come back to order. Chief Clerk, do you have any business? So in the offhand, somebody came to the front desk and took some papers off the front desk. We're missing some materials, the chief clerk's materials. And I'll make a statement about this at this actually at this point that reminds me when we're in session and our members are working at their desks, their offices, and we have guests on the floor. You know, of course, we had numerous guests on the floor the other day. I mean, you're walking through people's offices with your guests. And this dais is off limits when we're in session because of the unless the chief clerk is here and okay's it or I am. Because there are a lot of working papers here and and things that we do not want to misplace. So and also respect your colleagues spaces as well when when we're in session. So with that, Chief Clerk, we're good. All right. All right, we're back. We're continuing second reading. Next amendment for consideration is second reading amendment number fourteen to House Bill one thousand and one. Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to move second reading amendment number fourteen to House Bill one zero zero one and ask for a favorable consideration. Members, we've had lunch. Hopefully, we're all still awake. Hopefully, this will be the quickest, simplest, easiest amendment for of the day. So taking into consideration how many times we've looked at business friendly. And one of the things that business wants the most is stability. And so I looked at our sunset. And I think that our business would probably appreciate it if they knew what April first twenty twenty three was going to bring. So with that, there are two sessions coming up yet in between now and that sunset date. So I would with this amendment, I would remove that sunset date. So there would be stability. That I if there's no questions on.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Discussion on the amendment? Discussion on the amendment, Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, and and I apologize for being a little thick between the ears. And so when you say you you do away the sunset date, you're you're meaning you'd carry this out in perpetuity.
We're not having a discussion. We're not having a discussion. We're on second reading rules.
Yep.
So the good chairman large or Representative Larson can ask questions, make comments or whatever. And then Representative Jennings, you'll get to go last to respond to questions unless you have a colleague that wants to respond to those. So.
That was.
Representative Larson, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that would be my question to you when you when you come back is if you're going to do that in perpetuity. And if I if that is indeed the the case, I would really encourage us not to do that. We don't need to. That would be, I think it does give businesses certainty if that is the case. Because they would say this is a burden that you're putting on business moving forward. Thank you. We'll see you later.
Thank you, Representative Gray. First time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, in answer to that question, rather than waiting until the end, I thought I'd get up here and say, yes, it would remove the sunset. The federal preemption issue still remains in place. We'll have a discussion on that later. But it removes the date sunset. And with all the work we've done on this, there are very few statutes that have this kind of of sunset in there so quick. And when you think about the closures of businesses, the what's been imposed on them. This is and really, I haven't heard from a single business that opposes this that is small business, a single one. It's only been big out of state corporations. And so I I think that, you know, that that removing this sunset is is really just just good cleanup on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? First time Representative Walters, first time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is far more than a cleanup. This is a significant change here. This is exactly what we've spent the last two days debating here on this floor is do we want to put our businesses in a position of being stuck between do they break the federal law or do they break the state law? Because without this, this is the section that discusses when that if and when something from the federal side comes into place. Then without this language right here, that that federal rule standard would be in place as well as the state standard. And it would be putting these businesses in that exact pinch of which law do I choose to break today? That by getting rid of this, this is one of the two sunsets. This is one of the two ways this law expires is either by March thirty first of twenty twenty three in subsection Romanet two or by the imposition of these rules and mandates from the federal side. And that's exactly what we've debated for two days now. Do we really want to put our businesses, large and small alike? And remember, folks, these small businesses and large businesses are the people that employ all of the individuals that we have these concerns about. And I am equally concerned about all the individuals. But having a mandate and having no job because the company went out chose to go out of business because we put more regulation upon them. I'd rather have some sort of mandate and a job than no job because my business went out of place, out of business. And the place where I work went out of business. And having this second second trigger of when does this come and go and 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 come into effect and get repealed or or not not effective as the new language earlier in the day states is really, really concerning. And that's what's going away in this amendment. So this is far more than a cleanup amendment. This is a major policy question. I would encourage a no on this amendment. Again, businesses are people. They employ the people in this state. We're trying to help everybody in this situation. And this does not do any of that. So please vote no on this amendment.
Any other member first time? First time Representative Bear, first time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I believe that the previous speaker made my point. And that is that employers don't want to know what they want to know what's coming and going. And unfortunately, you were making something that's going to come and then go. So with that, let's just make something that comes and we should count on it. We should expect it to withstand the test of trial and stays and all these other things we've been discussing. Let's not give an assumption here that it's going to go away. Thank you. On and.
Any other member for their first time? We are on first time, first time, second reading amendment number fourteen. First time, second time Representative Gray.
You, Mr. Speaker, and just correcting, you know, some of the things that have been said earlier, this is not delete one, Romanet I. It's written a little bit in a way that's unclear because it changes the 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 coding because you have to change the order of it. Deletes Romanet two. That's the date. We're going to have a discussion about Romanet I. That's the next amendment. Okay, this is the date. Thank you.
For discussion, Representative Larson, you're on your second time on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what I think the original intent of the bill was to say is we have this temporary situation in the state that we're addressing through this bill. And we're going to put it out there till twenty three or until these other requirements come in. I don't think you can dispute that that certainty to know that that's that's what the intent is. Now, I think by removing the date and making this as was indicated, this is just part of this is life now as we know it in Wyoming. Also indeed does add certainty that we have now restricted the ability of businesses to make decisions on the type of equality of or whatever they want for employee mandates or or conditions of employment. And we we have, we we talk about taking freedoms away. And we've heard repeatedly over the last few days about the concern of of the federal government coming in and imposing these mandates on us and the overreach and the taking away of the freedoms. And I just think that we lose track of the fact that we're doing the exact same thing. We're imposing now all these restrictions on the ability of private businesses to function. We're saying we know what's better for you. And this is in order for you to operate in business, we're going to put another level of requirements or restrictions or how whatever you want to say. And I don't argue. It really, it really adds definition to how the the future would look. And I don't think that it it certainly puts the light out there much further. And I think that, boy, I think that this is not a good policy for us to adopt and would hope that you would resist this amendment.
Thank you. So members, any other member for their second time, second time before the sponsor? Before the sponsor. To the sponsor, Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And so the the main thing that I'm wanting to do with this is that April first twenty twenty three does not wake up with businesses with a with a fool's day. Happy April Fool's Day. They'll know with certainty. I have confidence in this body. We're going to revisit this. We're we are not done with this. When we finish this, hopefully, we have a product that we have confidence in. And we can say we can remove that sunset date. We'll come back if need be. And but our businesses will know where we're at. Vote aye, please.
All right, members, we are voting on second reading amendment number fourteen to House Bill one thousand one. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no.
No.
Amendment has not been adopted. Division being called, all those in favor, please rise. Or if you're online, you can raise your hand. All those opposed? More than eighteen. Thank you. The amendment has not been adopted. Next amendment for consideration, fifteen, Representative Gray. Yes, we're on rep on second reading amendment number fifteen, Representative Gray.
I move second reading amendment number fifteen to House Bill one thousand one in the special session and ask for favorable consideration. This amendment is an extremely important discussion, and I think we need to discuss it head on. Got a little bit into it yesterday, but there were some other things interacting with the amendment. And so I wanted on second reading to have just a clean discussion on the preemption issue and whether we talk about it in this bill. And there've been a lot of people talking about balancing arguments in this bill, getting the balance right. And I think we need to get the balance right, too, in terms of the message and the substance that we send towards the federal government in this bill. One of the things I'm very concerned about is and it's I I think it's a tactic used by a political ideology. I'm certainly not part, you know, it's 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 a certain political ideology in our country that I think is represented right now at the federal level in the executive branch. Where it's a tactic where they throw so much on the wall that is so shocking and they try to normalize it over time. And what this mandate, this proposed mandate, the way it's being presented, the substance of it goes against all of the norms of our constitutional republic. And we see this time and time again where they just.
Representative Gray, so we are on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, please get to the amendment.
Well, what this amendment does is it removes the preemption issue. And what they're trying to do here is just normalize something that is so shocking. This is the biggest attack to our constitutional republic in my lifetime. And I believe that. There's a a number of different things interacting here. One, the delegation of supposed authority to the executive branch with this mandate. For this not to go through Congress, something of this magnitude is clearly outside of the enumerated powers and the interaction of the three branches of government in our constitution. And we need to weigh the seriousness of what is happening here when we decide how to deal with the preemption issue in this statute. So what does this amendment do and what does it not do? One, it does not, it does not require employers to decide which statute to violate. It does not do that. It is silent on the preemption issue by removing these paragraphs. If the mandate comes, then the courts can work it out. We have removed the penalty. So now this is an arbitration. So an arbitrator can decide, hey, in that process, the federal mandate's in place. They can decide the arbitration is null and void. The fines out of here. The Attorney General could go across the street and ask for them to weigh in if this went into effect. Or they could do that in federal court. All of those things could play out. This argument that is being made that removing these paragraphs requires employers to decide is not accurate. Removing these paragraphs simply has the statute be silent on this issue. Now, on the flip side, what does it do? One, it makes clear the severity of the situation and how seriously we are taking it. I believe that Texas, Florida, many other states, if we take the lead on this issue, will join. And it could play a factor as this decision is being made by the federal, by the executive branch at the federal level on how to proceed on how that plays out. This rule, if it does come into place, and it's not law, it's a rule. Okay? And supposedly, according to them, the Congress has delegated this authority to one person. Totally inconsistent with our constitution. Let's keep in mind here that we are the inheritors of the legacy of the Constitutional Convention in our state where we opted in as a sovereign to join the republic. And there was an assumption there that they were going to follow that promise, the Constitution of the United States. And we are so outside the bounds here that we need to, we need to discuss what is going on. And we need to say that we're going to be silent on this issue of preemption and allow it to play out. And if it's not enjoined or if an arbitrator says that the federal rule isn't in place, we can go back into special session. But by then, we'll be in the budget session anyway. There will be an implementation period on this rule. Nobody's being forced to choose anything. The emergency rule could go into effect right away, but it'll have a period before where they say it has to, there's thirty to sixty days where it needs to be implemented. So there's going to be a period where we can evaluate this. Nobody is deciding, is being forced to choose here on which law to follow if we remain silent on this issue. But what does it do if we remain silent on this issue? One, it makes clear the seriousness of this, which would hope hopefully cause them to back down, allow them to consider the seriousness of what they're doing. And two, if if they don't, it reveals how callous they really are. If they are going to threaten huge portions of our state with this rule. And you know, that's information I think we need to know how far they're willing to go with this kind of behavior. I want to address a couple more of the legal arguments here. The supremacy clause does not apply to actions outside of the enumerated powers. It does not apply to anything. The federal government could not just issue even a law choosing to do anything and cite the supremacy clause. That is not what the Constitution says. The mainstream media can repeat the other way as many times as they want. That's not what it says. It's also an unconstitutional delegation to the executive branch, this rule. Presupposing that we do not have this power, and we discussed it a little bit earlier, is very troubling. And presupposing that we do not have the ability to weigh in on this, it's defeatist. And I think that kind of defeatism is why we're in this position where we continue to have the federal government not follow the Constitution. We are a republic of fifty states. It's very important that we start acting like it. So let's pass this amendment. Let's remain silent on this issue. And let this play out. Thank you. And the other thing I would ask, too, is, is we discussed this. I really asked you to talk about compassion yesterday. Let's not have inaccurate, please, can we please watch the inaccurate arguments? And and this does not require anybody to choose, especially with the with the penalty out of there and moving to arbitration. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gray. Majority Leader Summers for your first time on amendment twenty fifteen.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Excuse me. On and against the amendment. I guess I couldn't be any stronger against this amendment than I've been against any any amendment on this floor. And I disagree with the words that were said because, yes, if we have a law, so this law will go away in two years. We're we're not a, we're not a full time legislature. We're not going to be here at the moment this could happen. So we got a, we got a drop dead date in two years. So the the law goes away. But in in that two year period, this law is in place. And 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 regardless of whether the penalty is small or not, the law is in place. And then if the federal government comes in with a with a mandate that violates our federal law, and let's say it's a health facility that needs, let's say it's the CMS rule. And a health facility needs Medicaid dollars, Medicare dollars, or a nursing home that needs Medicare dollars, Medicaid dollars. And then they have to choose, and likely they would, they would choose to break our law, the state of Wyoming's law, and issue a mandate, a vaccine mandate, so they could get, you know, we, none of us like this. None of us like what has happened to us and what has come down from Washington. But it's a reality. And we do not want to bankrupt if this, if this law comes out in the next two months and we've got this in place. Then they have to choose to violate an entity, a healthcare entity would have to choose to violate our law. So the penalty's small, that's fine. But we are putting in a law that they would have to violate in order to get the money they need to operate their facilities. And I just think that's wrong. I I think it's wrong to put in place law just for the intent of seeing it being broken. I think we had really good language. I think we got good language right now in this, on this preemption section. You know, if we need to tweak that a little, but I like it. I think we go right as far as we can, right through a state. But but this is too far, on and against.
Thank you. Other members for their first time, Representative Brown, for your first time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just want to take a step back here for just a second, put it in a different frame for some of us. I I don't disagree with the good representative out at the center of the state about sending somewhat of a message here. I I don't. I think it is a complete federal overreach, what they're doing. I don't agree with the idea behind it whatsoever. But sending this type of a message is counterproductive to what we actually want to do. And so I want to frame it just just a hair different. What if we were talking about the Second Amendment? Would we care about the supremacy clause if this body decided to deliberate a Second Amendment issue? And we're going to send a message back to that. We're going to say we don't care about the preemption with with that. There's no way that this body would even be having this discussion if it was something along the along those lines. You know, we've done a lot of quoting out of this little book here. And and I guess I'll I'll reread it again, but it's Article one, section thirty seven this time. Constitution of the United States Supreme Law of the Land. The state of Wyoming is an inseparable part of inseparable part of the federal union and the Constitution of the United States. It's the supreme law of the land. Do I believe that the federal government has probably overstepped the Tenth Amendment on this? I think that's a probably a pretty good chance for us to debate that here on this floor is not what happens. We have three branches of government for a reason. That will be adjudicated in the judicial branch. That's what happens. For us to pull out and say, we don't care what the federal government says is akin to calling for secession. You are saying at this point that you would rather give the shake of the fist in the air to the federal government and risk everything we have in line with the federal government just to just to fight this vaccine mandate, which, need I remind, all of us in this body does not exist yet. We do not have a mandate yet. We are swinging our arms in a dark room, hoping we connect with something. I I cannot even begin to fathom why we would pass an amendment like this. This is so far out of reach for what this body should be deliberating. Vote no.
Thank you. Other members, first time, Representative Hallinan, for your first time on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This bill does not challenge the federal action.
There hasn't been any federal action. It simply states what Wyoming's law should be. And that's what we do here. We set the law for the state of Wyoming. I think one of the issues that's brought up and is said many times over here that if you want conflict between the federal and state law, well, we're setting out a proposition that we oppose this executives, executive agreement or the executive announcement by the President of the United States. And we have our right to do that. We have a right to set our laws for this state. I think business is going to have a decision, especially hospitals. If he does come forward with this kind of executive mandate, if he does, they don't have to follow our state law. They can go ahead and follow the federal mandate until it's overturned by the courts. They can do that. So our hospitals will not go broke. I think we also need to look at all these employees around our state. They're having to make a decision whether to accept the decisions of their employer to accept the mandate or not. And many of them have decided not to accept the mandate. I think we have to accept the fact that we should also not accept the mandate. So with that in mind, Mr. Speaker, I support this amendment and I urge the rest of this body also to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Washit for your first time on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It seems to me we have two pieces of legislation, one of which we're working now, one we will hopefully get to sometime today. And it's that second piece of legislation that speaks to the national mandate. This piece of legislation, which is going to be amended by this proposed amendment is supposed to be the bill that deals with our local mandates by private employers within our state. I think the place to make a strong, strong stand in terms of the, the preemption issue should be in the second piece of legislation, which pertains to the national mandate. And that we should do everything we can in this piece of legislation to protect our businesses within the state. Because somebody used the expression yesterday, playing chicken with the federal government. If we lose the game of chicken, it's not going to be the Wyoming State Legislature that pays that price. So I think that, that the place to fight our battle on preemption will be in the next piece of legislation.
Thank you. Representative Nyman for your first time on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, we've been talking about the whole idea that we're trying to protect business, the preemption. If we, as a body, don't recognize, and, and, and I mean, I think we, we really genuinely are trying. But if we don't recognize the fact that we are here as a body to preserve freedom, that's our job as Americans. I mean, you look at this, you know, freedom, when you, when you, when you look at from the standpoint of freedom, freedom is for the common good. That's, that's what we're here to do. And in order to have that freedom, we have to empower the individual. That's what, that's what makes this work. When we hear consistently, and, and I mean, it, it all, man, let's just boil it down. It all boils down to money. We're all here trying to figure out how we can keep from poking the bear and lose our money. And the fact is, if we're willing as people to give up our freedom for security, we will have neither. If the message needs to be sent to the federal government from a state like Wyoming, where I believe we've gone out of our way to try to provide equality and justice for all. And we read our Constitution that says, all men were created equal and are endowed by, and are endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights. And to me, that was a Jeffersonian way of saying, any fool, any idiot should understand this. And those rights are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But we're boiling this whole thing down, folks, as I listen to just, we're scared of the, we're scared of the feds. We are scared to death that the federal government, that the king will somehow, all of a sudden, not extend his scepter to us and we're going to fold up shop and we're going to be done. And if that's the case, we're done. We will not threaten them. We will not challenge them. We will not stand up for anything because God forbid we make the feds crabby because they own half the state. They'll stop giving us money to supply our roads and our maintenance for our interstates. We would lose 11% of our education money. I think it's $176 million we'd lose from the federal government if we, if the feds said, nope, we're not sending you money because you stood up against us and said, we're gonna, we're gonna stand up for our citizens. And don't misunderstand this either. I have had this conversation with folks and it bothers me. I could give you names of several legislators in here that it has given me real heartburn. And I don't, like I told somebody, I slept like a baby last night. I woke up every three hours crying. Just trying to be able to understand, how do we protect business? And not take away their private right. I'm a private business person. There's multiple private businesses in here. We want to protect your rights to choose, to not add layers, as some have said, and to create more bureaucracy and more, more problems. But folks, if we're not willing to stand up to the federal government, when they say squat, we start straining. Because we're scared to death that they're going to jerk their funds. We're over center. Do we want to continue down that road? If that's, if that's not a big issue, then let's just continue down that road and let's just keep being scared to death that they're going to come and take it away. But until we as a state and we as a people stand up and say, you know what? We're a part of this thing, but you have to respect us. You have to respect our individual rights. Because businesses are like, I've often heard it said on this floor, businesses are made up of individuals. If we don't protect the individuals' rights, the businesses fail. And if we just, we're so worried that we're going to make somebody mad, they've got us. Doesn't matter what, what's coming next, preemption, all this, I guess we're going to fold. We're going to go because God forbid we'd run out of money. You know, a thought come to my mind, if Rosa Parks would have just stayed in the back of the bus, nobody would have said anything. Nothing would have changed. Is there a state that's going to stand up and say, hey, guess what? I mean, if some lady, yeah, anyway. I'll talk to whoever out here in the hall when I'm done. We, somebody's got to stand up. Somebody's got to say, you know what? We're not going this way. We're going to protect the individual rights. And we're not going to use the threat of, of withholding of funds to keep the people of this nation in line with the agenda that comes out of Washington. We can fight this. I would love to see the federal government come after Wyoming and say, we're going to withhold all of your, your highway funds. We're going to withhold your education funds. We're going to withhold, we're, we're going to do it. We're going to pound you little boogers into the sand because we need to make an example out of you guys because we sure as the world don't want anybody else to get the idea that they can stand up and say, no, we're not going there. Because if they do, they're going to find out the powers in the hands of the people. You know, maybe this is a lofty idealist goal, but maybe it shouldn't just be the fact that all the power is in the dollar. Maybe the idea that was America is what we need to stand on and start telling these guys, no, we're not going to do this. We're protecting our people and their rights, our businesses' rights. It's anti-American to do what they're doing. It's not right, guys. Vote for the.
I'll remind members not to use people's names at the, at the microphones again. I'm going to go to Representative Fortner because he's online and then I'll come back in the room. I'll go with Representative Larson and then Chairman Olson. Representative Fortner, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, once again. I know I probably stirred the pot on this conversation. I'm probably the culprit that people thinking of is, is being the one that wants to pick a fight. Well, you know, this nation, this fine nation was built by people like me and others that wasn't happy to be caged up in a bottle. They wasn't happy to, to answer to everybody every day of their life. This country was founded on limited government. And we, the citizens of this nation, including Wyoming, has filled our generation, the next generation and generations after us if we do not vote for this resolution. I think we can personally point a finger at ourselves and say, hey, we're the guys that throw Wyoming under the bus because we had an opportunity with this COVID and believe it or not, for every, every mishap that happens, there's something good that can come out of it that we had the best opportunity during COVID to turn Wyoming's future away from the federal government and do things for ourselves. We, we, we took off the shackles and, and we've, now we can stand up. We can reach bigger heights or taller heights than we've ever reached before. We can, we can expand out beyond what we ever thought we could. And, and expand Wyoming during this, during this mess instead of shrink it up and be afraid of our own selves, living like we're in a cocoon or something. I've never seen nothing like this. If you think this little conversation here is crazy, earlier on, I think it was like in April, I had a bill drafted to, to remove all federal funding from the state of Wyoming. Just for that reason, if we, we've too much relied on federal funding to destroy our state of Wyoming. If we would start making personal decisions to turn that tide back, it'd be the greatest thing in the world. I guess I've said all I need to say. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Fortner. Representative Larson Lloyd, first time.
Mr. Chairman.
You first for a second. Rep, Chairman Olson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and against this amendment? And I don't know that I could disagree with a lot of what was said by the previous speaker before the second, but I'm going to ask you to really take a hard look at just the drafting of this amendment. And I think what you should do is reject this amendment because it doesn't make any sense, actually. Regardless of the policy, just look at the way this amendment is drafted. The problem is that if you remember, there was this really long drawn out debate between more than half a dozen lawyers on the floor and we adopted an amendment during that process. Page 14 is probably the most amended portion of this bill right now and portions that we amended in the, what was known as the Creggo Amendment is not being deleted in this amendment. Specifically, when you look to line 14, I'm sorry, page 14, line 22, this amendment in front of you, ladies and gentlemen, goes directly into the original language of the bill, which was already deleted under the Creggo Amendment. So whether the policy is right or wrong here, I'm not here to tell you that. I'm just telling you, if you adopt this amendment, it's not going to work. So this needs to come back at the very least on a third reading amendment that takes into consideration the changes that we made to lines 22, when we specifically divided that Creggo Amendment, we adopted that language. And I'm not sure why that happened in the drafting stage. Maybe it didn't anticipate the division. I don't know. But as adopted right now, you're amending original language, which no longer exists in the bill. So I would ask to maybe speed up the process here a little bit, reject this amendment, come back on a third reading with a proper amendment that addresses the changes that were made and that's at least my, my read of it. Maybe I'm wrong if anyone else could point that out, but the language I see that's being specifically deleted on line 22 is already, for example, completely removed in the prior amendment. So I think this is likely to happen when we're moving really fast, which is what's happening. But you know, reject this amendment. Let's come back on a third reading amendment, try to get this right. But this, this amendment doesn't do it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Representative Baer for your first time on Amendment number 15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first for a second.
Thank you. Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to vote against the amendment and I just want to make a couple of comments. Excuse me. Nearly everybody in this room is mad. I get that. But I don't think it's fair to say that we're afraid that our money is going to be taken away. Because there's hardly anybody in this room who will suffer the consequences personally of going up against the federal government and having them stop paying out on Medicare and Medicaid. Virtually nobody. There's only, to my knowledge, there is only one active healthcare provider in this entire legislature. None of us here is right now in the hospital. I know, I believe the representative on the TV is out, so that's good. And I don't know if he's covered anyway. But I, I think we need to remember when we are expressed concern, I'm not worried about me. My business will be fine. I'll be fine if the feds take away all of this. What we are offering up is somebody else's revenue. And I think we need to remember that. It's very easy, I mean, easy to talk from here, but drive around your communities. Go into the nursing homes in your communities where we got our elderly folks and tell them, guess what? I'm taking away two thirds of your money because maybe the feds will take away the Medicaid dollars. And it's very easy for us to say, oh, well, they'll wait. They can fight it out. It'll go to court. I just think that we shouldn't be accused of being afraid. We're, I, we are worried about the reliability of the healthcare system. And you may say, hey, back in the 60s when Medicare and Medicaid passed, that was a bad decision. Okay, maybe it was, but it's there now. And I think if we are really willing to take away the revenue of the healthcare providers in the state, we need to be willing to make an appropriation for ARPA funds of $764 million a biennium to pick up the federal part of the Medicaid dollars that maybe they won't get. And I haven't heard any big offer of funding for the healthcare facilities across the state. So before we all get accused of being too chicken-hearted, I'd like to hear a big appropriation to cover our bet.
Thank you. Representative Stiff for your first time on the amendment.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. On and against the amendment? Respect for the rule of law does not make us weak. Passing a bill that is unconstitutional does not make us strong. On and against?
Representative Obermuller, first time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was stated by legislator a little earlier that the purpose of government is to protect our rights and couldn't agree more. I mean, that is the major purpose of government. I submit there's an additional purpose that's played out in Wyoming. And that is to create the conditions for people to succeed. You look at the history of Wyoming, starting with the Louisiana Purchase, those, those were government funds that basically put us in business in this state. The Intercontinental Railroad was something that the government did to help create the conditions for people to succeed. The Homestead Act, many people in here have a family history of that. The highway system and water development. You know, we have 24 major dams in this state that the federal government has been involved in. Without water development, as one of the great legislators has stated earlier, without water development, it's just sagebrush. So those dams have created those conditions that make it possible for people to succeed. So there's a practical consideration in terms of our relationship then with the federal government. Dollars from the federal government that is filtered through the state of Wyoming financial statements. You know, each year we have our financial statement audited by an outside CPA firm. And when you look at the last audited financial statement before the COVID dollars started coming in, the fed, the dollars from the federal government in that financial statement are more than all the individual taxes that we pay in the state. the fed, the dollars from the federal government in that financial statement are more than all the individual taxes that we pay in the state, including our sales taxes, our fees for services, and our state property taxes. So my question is, will the people of Wyoming, if we step away from the federal government, will the people of Wyoming step up and cover that gap, double their taxes to cover what the federal government is paying through that? Other federal dollars that don't filter through the state financial statement include Social Security and Medicare, millions of construction dollars, the administration of ninety percent of public lands, and the administration of the twenty-four major federal water projects that I've already talked about. The general proposition of getting the federal government out of the way is not really practical, nor is it in the best interest of Wyoming. When the money stops flowing, this dance will certainly stop. The brinkmanship will come to a screeching halt. We can play these games and then eat crow later, or we can bow out gracefully now. Because bottom line, we need, we like, and we depend on those federal dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Jennings, for your first time on the amendment fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So as I look at this amendment, I I see that it does draw that line to a certain degree. And I look at, um, I think the speaker four or five times ago, and I do understand that that uh, this impacts more than just us. And it impacts a lot of our citizens, and that's why we're here is to make this debate. But at some point, I don't know what that'll be. Either we choose to be free people, or we choose to continue to capitulate to a to a um overreaching federal government. Where do we draw that line? Is it today? There'll come a point where we won't be able to draw the line. And if it's a question of money, I would remind us that we're probably, we probably are the wealthiest state in the nation. Will we have to change things? There is no question. No question whatsoever. What is the price of freedom? What is the dollar amount on that? I'd like to know from the from the people on the opposition to this. I'd like to know what that dollar amount is. Maybe we would be willing to double our our taxes if we could still remain free. Maybe, maybe we have some things that we've positioned, but for a long time, we've not drawn the line. This amendment, small line, big cost. It is a hard one to make a decision for us. We were gonna worry about the money, or are we gonna worry about freedom? Our our oath was to freedom. It was to the Constitution. It was to those constituents out there. Yeah, including those ones that are relying upon federal dollars. And yeah, it will, it will bring about very hard decisions for these sixty seats here and down the hall. Are we gonna make it today? We're running out of days to make some kind of of a position here to preserve those freedoms on and for the this amendment.
Thank you. First time, Representative Provenza.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, you know, I would ask if all of our federal dollars went away or some of them, and we had to go home and tell our constituents that I'm I'm sorry, you no longer have a hospital in the community. You no longer have education or roads, things that we get a lot of federal dollars for, and they can't go to the doctor because there isn't one in their town anymore. Are they free? Are they free if they have to die because they don't have access to medical care? Thank you.
Any other member for their first time? Members, we are on first time. Chairman Zwanitzer.
First for a second. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member for their first time? First time. All right, members, we are on second time. Second time before the sponsor, second time. Any member for their second time? Representative Hallinan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I remember during the debate about this uh, this bill, one of our, I think one of our lawyers said in opposition to the amendment that was proposed earlier by, in the Crago Amendment, I guess I can call it that. He said that if you want conflict between federal and state law, just go ahead and call for it instead of the Crago Amendment, which kind of ameliorates that uh, conflict. I think that we need to recognize that we are in conflict between federal and state law, and we need to react accordingly. We have set forth in this bill thus far, it's really a very good bill. It's a bill that gives a lot of exemptions. It gives lots of consideration to various issues that were brought up and discussed on the floor. And I think that if this is the bill that goes before goes before the federal courts, before the uh, Supreme Court, I think it would reflect very well on this body. And I think it might gain the support of the federal courts. So for that reason, I support, I support this amendment. I think the issue on hospitals is really overdrawn. Hospitals can go ahead and accept the federal mandate, fire their employees if they want to, and then they can be within the federal mandate. So they won't put any hospitals out of business. And I think that's true of other bodies, other medical bodies around the state. So for that reason, I don't think that's a valid complaint about this amendment. So with all of those things in mind, I would urge very strongly that we support this amendment for the reasons that have been given by my colleague from the center of the state. I think he very well laid out the argument. And I do have a lot of sorrow for the businesses around the state. I think they will also have to decide whether they're going to support the federal law or the state law if this mandate comes through. It'll be up to them to decide what they wanna do. They can support the federal law, lay off the employees, or they can resist it and support the state law. But I don't know that there is any way that we can decide for them. They have to decide that for themselves. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue before this body, and I urge your support for this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Representative Fortner, for your second time on Amendment fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I view federal funding as if in one time might have been a good thing for Wyoming, but I think we've just took so much advantage and put in so much stake in the federal government that we forgot to be Y spenders in the state of Wyoming. I believe that probably well over half of what we're having supported, like our nursing homes, hospitals, et cetera, roads, schools. There's so much of that that could, we could turn back to private industry and private entities. Uh, let them buy into them things and let them do the investing and and the number crunching on those. Why in the world do we involve government in all these things? I know in Campbell County, Wyoming, we've done exactly the same thing. When I grew up here as a kid, we had numerous things here that was all, including the hospital where I was born, uh, they were, they was owned by my private entities. And now today, they're all owned by my uh, government and which, by the way, is not doing very well. But I guess the the last point I wanna make is our federal government is twenty-eight point four trillion dollars, last I checked, in debt. So we're gonna latch on to these guys like a bunch of ticks, and then when they go down, we really go down hard. Why don't, we wanna keep that in mind. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Members for their second time, Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In response to maybe at least one question that was asked, that I was able to uh, gather information on, just in our general fund budget, the budget that we deal with, um, there's about two billion dollars of biennium, so a billion, a billion dollars a year in our general fund uh, um, budget that we would have to uh, find elsewhere. So where would that come from, or where do we do, we seen last year when we made these very serious cuts that uh, we held our breath, bated breath, and was able to put some things back in, but that's the if we, if if we got brave, so to speak, and says, told the federal government, they could go stick it in their pipe and smoke it, and we would happily happily walk on our own, then it's gonna be um, a good portion of the uh, share that takes care of our developmentally disabled. As the good chairman of Labor and Health pointed out, it would be the hospitals in your area, um, which many would probably cease to exist, so that would put a greater burden on healthcare in the state, which we've been trying to correct. Uh, long-term care uh, would be, would be jeopardized enormously, and we know that that's our biggest expense moving forward, is taking care of the old fat gray-haired guys like me when we start slobbering and have to have our diapers changed. And uh, and as well, then we step outside the general fund budget and we look at the federal dollars that are used to maintain, to end to construct highways, bridges. And so when we look at uh, passing lanes that we feel are really important on Highway fifty-nine, uh, and they are, those are done with federal dollars. Uh, when we uh, look at bridges and wildlife crossings, those are done with federal funds. Um, we talked about, or we heard some testimony about the Constitution, and if we really adhere to it, then and what we're here for is to protect jobs and look out for the employers. So by by standing here and and taking our turn at the fire hydrant, and we're, what we're gonna do is put these employers in a compromising situation that would possibly require them to lose funds and potentially lay off the the very people that we say we're trying to help by protecting jobs. Um, we talked about limited government. I heard a comment about limited government here, but here we are. This esteemed group of people that that we seem to be doing our level best over the last couple of days to outdo the federal government in putting restrictions on the private sector, these employers and employees that were supposedly trying to protect. I uh, we talked about freedom empowers the individual, and I couldn't agree more. I I couldn't agree more. So then, then why would we continue to impose these regulations on them? So I think good friends to to think that we can uh, step back and um, suggest, and I think the the language was maybe other states might join in with this, is a huge gamble putting the citizens of the state, the businesses of the state, the well-being of the state at risk that I don't think that we, as a legislative body, have the right to do. And I would encourage you to vote against this amendment.
Thank you. On second time, Representative Baer, for your second time, Amendment fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heard a lot of discussion about what I, it seems to me is a bill that didn't make it through the committee a couple of days ago. What I'm hearing is about a bill that seems to mandate that you can't do a mandate. This bill does not do that. This bill allows a mandate. It puts restrictions on that, clarity to employers. If you stay within those restrictions and that clarity, you can have a mandate. So the Wyoming state government with this bill is not telling businesses that they can't do what they wanna do. We tell businesses how to treat employees so that they are not discriminating all the time. That's what we're doing. We're asking them not to discriminate. We're telling them what the cost of discrimination will be. There is nowhere in this bill that the state of Wyoming is trampling on the rights of business owners to the extent that they should be allowed to trample on the rights of individuals. But that's what the federal government seems to want to do, and as I read the founding fathers, they expected a vigorous battle between the states and the federal government when it comes to power. It's been made very clear to this body that only enumerated powers in the United States Constitution are the powers of the federal government. It's also been made clear in this debate that the health and welfare of the citizens of this state is not the responsibility of the federal government. It's the responsibility of this state. And we're talking about health and welfare when we talk about COVID nineteen. So let's, let's get the context right. We're not talking about overreaching as a state government. We're talking about putting limitations that allow these businesses to understand how to operate within the law that should a federal government come along and and create a law. They haven't done that yet. I'm not sure that they ever will. Because they know the Constitution now, they don't have those enumerated powers. So far, we've had a speech. We've had potentially some rulemaking coming down the line. We've seen nothing of it. This is not dealing with that rulemaking other than, right now, we'd like to take language out of this bill with this amendment so that we don't give up the fight before the fight ever happens. If this bill goes to court, and in this bill, the verbiage is there that says, well, once the federal government comes in, this all gets repealed, and that's what we have. That's what we're removing. That's what this amendment is about. Then when it gets to the courts, the judge simply says, you guys already expected this. You don't have a leg to stand on. So we must remove this language for this bill to mean anything on and for the bill, for the amendment. Thank you.
Any other member for their second time? We're on second time, second reading amendment number fifteen. Any other member for their second time? Second time to the sponsor, Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So responding to those points, first on the Medicare, Medicaid, the healthcare facility, so uh, if it did come to the point where a federal or state court didn't enjoin the statute, if there was a mandate, all that would happen is the medical facility would side with the money, and when they went to the arbitrator, which is the current process laid out in state statute, the arbitrator would side with them because the federal law, the federal rule would probably override at that point. So all of the statements on funding with medical providers are just inaccurate. And I really think it's important as we continue to to be a legislative body that we address these issues head-on and and not uh, and and deal with the reality on how this would play out. There are all sorts of statutes over time that have conflicted with federal law and rule. And many have been overturned. There is no rule yet. Now, we came in with this timing because some businesses are feeling pressured by the speech, and also we wanna be proactive as to what happens if the rule does go into place to strengthen our hand, and that this amendment is part of that effort. To say that this is gonna stand still, and they're going to have to go through other processes to try to take this down. There's no medical funding at stake here. Zero. The argument that was brought, you know, on highway funding and money, and this was all bluster and we heard it from the representative from District 45 and the representative from District 56, money is not everything. And principles stand for something. And, and I've talked to my constituency and, and that's where we're at. Money is not everything. And if we're at the point where just because federal funding is being tied to something that we're going to back down every single time, then what is the function of the legislative branch at the state level besides handing out money, which, which maybe that's the answer, but that's not my view, but maybe that's, that's, that's the position of some folks. We haven't heard discussion about the other political ideology that, that has decided to preempt federal law with sanctuary cities or with marijuana laws. Legalization. Why, why is that not tied to funding? Why is there never discussion on preemption on that? Things are becoming so twisted. This mandate is dictatorial. And I don't know, I guess a point of order, do, do they want to get up there? It's on topic. It's on topic to compare things.
Mr. Speaker, point of order, sanctuary cities.
What's your point, Madam Minority Floor Leader?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That, we're off topic. Sanctuary cities and marijuana have little to do with the amendment that's before us.
Mr. Speaker of Colorado.
Representative Gray, right now, minority, minority floor leader has the floor. She will make her point and we will proceed from there. Minority floor leader, make your point, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My point is, is that we need to be staying on the amendment. We are on a second reading of the amendment with the bringer of the amendment, talking, should be talking very specifically about that amendment which goes to a bill and a section of the bill. An analogy, if that's what it is, to sanctuary cities and medic marijuana seems very, very far afield from what we are talking about today. I would ask that we stay on the topic.
Thank you, Madam Minority Floor Leader. So I think I have actually given quite a bit of latitude to a lot of speakers on this amendment and several others. And occasionally we've maybe strayed a little further. I know that there is much to be said and much more to said. So, and we have at least four, five more amendments before us. So Representative Gray, please tie up the ends with the amendment in your case for the amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And we got to have debate on these issues. We can't have an effort to silence the fact that other entities like Colorado have sanctuary cities. There's no discussion of money tied to that, but here there is going to be. And then an attempt to try to shut that down. That's astounding.
Representative Gray, you will lose the privilege to speak if you continue because the body can take that away from you. I can't. Please stay to the topic of your amendment. Thank you, Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, the topic of the amendment is federal funds and the preemption issue, which I think we should be comparing it to other states. The reality is that this mandate is dictatorial. And we need to take a stand for what's right and be silent on that issue and continue to let it play out as it moves through the system. This is standing for the rule of law. It's standing for the rule of law. And if the rule of law just goes away just because one entity has a mandate, then we are losing our republic. We are losing our republic. Thank you for this opportunity and I'm going to ask for a recorded vote because it's important for the future of our republic.
Thank you, members. So according to the Constitution of Wyoming, any member can ask for a, a recorded vote. That has been requested. So Chief Clerk, we are going to be voting on second reading amendment number 15 to House Bill 1001. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Andrew Baker Banks Baer Blackburn Brown Burkhardt Burt Clausen Connolly Craig O Duncan Eklund Air Flattner Fortner
Aye.
Gray Greer Hallinan Haroldson Harshman
No.
Heiner
No.
Heiner Henderson Jennings Kenner Knapp Larson Lloyd Larson Dan LeBeau McGuire Nyman Newsome excused, Nicholas Oakley Obermuller O'Hern Olson Ottman Paxton Provenza
No.
Rodriguez Williams Romero Martinez Roscoe Schwartz Sherwood Simpson Summers Stith
No.
Stevar Sweeney Walters Washit Western Worf excused, Williams Wilson Winter Yin Zwanitzer Mr. Speaker Closing vote. Are there any changes? Closing vote. Vote is closed. Eighteen aye, forty no, two excused.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Second reading amendment number 15 has not passed the House. Members, so refresh your amendment page because the succeeding amendment has 16, has a corrected copy. There is a corrected copy if you haven't refreshed your amendment page. So I'm going to give folks just a moment to, to do that. And I think Representative Hallinan, 16, I have that in your name. And first, as people are refreshing, I have, is a privilege of the floor, Representative Sweeney.
Privilege of the floor, Ms. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. So some of you may remember a page slash intern from a few years ago. And he has graced us with his presence in, in the gallery, Jonathan True. And, Mr. Speaker.
Please.
I am hopeful he will move into my district and take my seat. I was really thinking about going and getting him and bringing him down and having him take my place for a bit, but during all of this, but it's, it's truly great to have you here in, uh, keeping the Wyoming traditions alive.
Well, we are pleased to have Mr. True here with us. It was a pleasure having him part of this body and, and, or serving with this body. However, I don't think we have a provision to, to get a tap out in the legislature. I don't think there's a tap out provision in the Wyoming Constitution, but nice try, Representative Sweeney. We have another privilege, Representative Duncan.
Privilege of the floor, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So I would like the body, make sure he's in here. I'd like the body to congratulate the service and the dedication of being here on special days. Just to show how much we do, but we have a member in here who's my desk mate, who happens to be serving today on his 43rd wedding anniversary, his dedication, Representative Kenner.
Well, congratulations, Representative and Mrs. Kenner. I'm sure she's probably back in Sheridan enjoying champagne alone tonight. So we congratulate you on a successful 40 year, three years of marriage. All right. Any other privileges of the floor? Privileges of the floor. We continue on now with a corrected copy. Representative Hallinan, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I respectfully withdraw amendment number 16 to House Bill number one.
Thank you very much. We're on to 17. Representative Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I apologize to the body, but when we passed the first amendment today in the second reading, we had missed a couple of items and we did pass that amendment. It had to do with changing the EAU language to include or limit to simply COVID-19. So we are simply doing a correction here, a technical correction of adding two more locations. So with that, I ask for your favorable consideration.
Representative Baer, first of all, you did not move the, the amendment. And second of all, I think that might be the succeeding amendment. So we're on 17, Representative Baer, by my count. 16 was the one that was just withdrawn, corrected copy. So 17, Representative Baer, if you would, if you can want to continue with that amendment, go ahead and move it and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Number's got a little bit twisted up on me there. I apologize. So I do move second reading amendment number 17 to House Bill number one, 1001, and ask for your favorable consideration. Yesterday, we had quite a bit of debate on a particular small item, and that was language that gave corporations or employers a way to opt out of this particular bill. And it basically had to do with it being an undue burden. The debate at that time talked about federal funding. So there are a lot of larger employers in the business that receive federal funds. And that language captures all businesses and there's no particular limitation as to what they can do to apply for this undue burden. And so it basically makes the, the bill very untenable. So here I'm introducing some additional language, just saying that if there is $100,000 per year or more of federal funding, then they can use that particular phrase and they can apply for that undue burden removal from the bill. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Discussion on the amendment. This is second reading amendment number 17. Discussion. Chairman Zwanitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I really like the intent of the amendment. I, I just get worried, A, when you put a number in statute and B, when it's just federal funding across the board, right, this bill is going to apply to all businesses, large and small throughout Wyoming. And I, I just don't know, when you say federal funding, that ties into a whole lot of things across so many agencies from ag funds, forest service, certainly Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security, disability in the workplace. I, I just, I wish it was a little tighter and it just gives me pause to, to put that because I do think it's litigious. And then you could demand a business owner, you know. I understand when it's a federal contract, but trying to equate all federal funds that would come to a business, I, I just think is really difficult and, and kind of murkies the bill, even if the intent is good.
We've got somebody online needs to turn off their, thank you. All right. Representative Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to the presenter of the amendment, I, I'm trying to make sure that I understand it. And, and so we're saying that in this, that one of the requirements that would allow someone to have a vaccine mandate would be that the employer determines that the mandating the employee vaccination is critical to ensuring the health, safety and welfare of the workplace or otherwise jeopardize it, the business. Then we add this new language of the employer, if the employer receives $100,000 or more per year of federal funds. And so my, my question, if you would just, if I'm understanding that right, when you come back up on your second reading, and if that's the case, then that would still mean any Wyoming business who has less than 100,000, meets these criterias and gets less than $100,000 per year in federal funds would be required to comply with the conditions of the bill as it's currently written. And if that's the case, I, 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 I don't think that that, well, I'll wait for second reading. We'll get that cleared up.
Any other member for their first time, first time on amendment 17, first time, Chairman Greer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just on that last question. Okay, so we're saying you cannot have a mandate in Wyoming. Unless, okay, unless in the first threshold of that is that you've determined in writing that, that you required to mandate employees because as a condition of employment, make sure I'm myself right, but for the safety of your workplace, your patients or your customers. Okay. What, when this amendment that came out was, was concerning contractors that deal with the federal government. Okay, with federal contracts. And if you recall, the discussion or the argument was, well, we said, or your business is in jeopardy because you need to have a mandate. Okay, if I'm saying this right, so I'm putting this in perspective. So that your business needs to have a mandate in order to be able to comply with the requirements of a federal contract. So we put that in there to provide that roadmap. Clear, concise regulation, roadmap for employers. Okay, what this amendment simply does is just takes that threshold up and it'd be those employers that have a federal contract, they're doing business over $100,000 a year with the federal government. So it's just pay, it's just paving a path forward and just setting that tier with it. So I don't think that last statement that if, if you have less than that, that you have to comply with the mandate. What it says is if you have less than that, you make less than 100,000, you can't do a mandate. I'm in favor of the.
Further discussion, first time on the amendment, Representative Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Given that, maybe my, I guess I have a question on how this works. A lot of you are small business owners. I work with small business, business owners every day and $100,000 threshold obviously is more than most make in a year. For instance, I have a caterer in my community that caters meals for wildland firefighters and that is a federal contract. It's nowhere near $100,000. It's well, well south, south of that. Does this then put him at odds with those federal regulations and what he has to do? The way I'm reading it, it would, it would indicate that he is not able to apply for the exemption because he doesn't reach that $100,000 threshold. So if you could answer that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other member for their first time on the amendment, first time on 17. 17, Representative Sherwood, first time.
Thank you. First for a second.
Any other member for their first time, first time, Representative Brown.
First for a second, Mr. Chairman.
Any other member want a first for a second? Representative Jennings. Any other member for their first time? Representative Wilson, do you want a first for a second or do you want a first?
No, actually, Mr. Speaker, thank you. I, this is my ninth year and I have never yet asked, said first for a second in nine years. My question was just because some of the folks that were answering questions were not all within the bar perhaps to hear. And I just want to reiterate from the member of the Southwest. I, I get what the idea is, but what if my entire business only makes 80,000 a year and 75,000 of it is federal? That, then I, I mean, if I lose all my federal contract, I'm out of business. And I'm I'm not quite sure about this this bar. I mean, it seems like it would be better to have a percentage or something, you know, that, well, if federal money is only five percent of your business, you can stand to lose it. But I'm not sure that a a flat number works for every business, and I just would like to have that cleared up.
Thank you. Any other member first time? Representative Stiff.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Just a question for the bringer of the amendment. This amendment seems to discriminate against small businesses, and so my question is, what's the social good? What good are you achieving by making it harder for small businesses as opposed to large businesses? What's the principle? What's the principle here that makes it a good idea to discriminate against small businesses?
Thank you. Any other member first time, first time Amendment Seventeen? First time, first time, seeing none. We're on second time, second time before the sponsor. Representative Brown, second time before the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I I'll be honest with you. I'm having a hard time tracking. I think I understand, thanks to the good chairman of minerals. But I really do appreciate the sentiment that just came out of the chairman of Labor Health, and I think that's probably a bigger concern to me at this point is we have this random threshold at a hundred thousand dollars now. One particular employer may get a federal highway contract and gets that hundred thousand dollars, and he's already elected to put something in there. Now he can't. Now he can't enforce his own business practices. So this actually excludes certain people from wanting to go bid on certain contracts with the federal government. This actually prohibits them from being able to do business in the state of Wyoming at a certain level. Even if I put it back into perspective of a percentage, I do really get concerned about that because if it's five percent or four percent, we assume in this body that somebody can assume to lose four percent of their business. Well, some businesses operate on a two and a half to three percent margin, and we're just going to say, yeah, you can go ahead and lose four percent. State of Wyoming, we're not going to lie you to vaccinate. I'm standing here on the same principle that I have yesterday and earlier today. This is capitalism, folks. Standing in the way of capitalism, saying that you're going to stop people from doing what they want to do with their business is not allowing capitalism to take place. Let the business sink or swim on their desire, whether or not they want to put in a vaccine mandate or not. If they fail because they can't find enough workers to fill it, then they fail. That's their fault. If they can't get customers to come in the door because somebody boycotts them, that's their fault. Putting this random and arbitrary hundred thousand dollar mark, just, I'm really concerned about what that says to some of these contractors out there in the state that maybe they see this hundred and five thousand dollar opportunity out there, and they say, well, we put a mandate in, we can't bid for that. Do I want to tell that, that construction company that I voted for something like that that says, no, we don't want you to do business because you elected to have a vaccine mandate? So the state of Wyoming says you can't, you can't bid on this now. I don't want to do that. I hope you don't either.
Any other member for their second time? We're second time before the sponsor, second time before the sponsor. Representative Bear.
Thank you, and I appreciate the debate. Just a couple of things. The chairman of labor brought up this bar issue, and we had another representative state that we may be discriminating against small businesses. Again, the whole reason we're here is because the federal government came out with a a speech through the executive that said employers with a hundred or more employees. So at that moment, a bar was set. So we're trying to work within that framework. It was also said earlier in debate a day ago that most of the businesses in this state aren't going to mandate because they fall underneath that threshold. So this bill is not going to apply to them. I'll say what I said in the earlier debate, and that is that this bill simply gives the businesses guidelines. So if we give them guidelines, and those guidelines are too onerous, the statement as it is now allows them to opt out. And that's fine. We want that, especially if it's onerous because the federal government is saying they're going to pull funds from them. So we want to protect those businesses that are getting a large amount of money, and that's why that bar was set where it was set. It just has to do with large contracts versus small contracts, and I hope that clears it up, and thank you, and I move the amendment.
Thank you. Members, we are voting on second reading Amendment Number Seventeen, the House Bill One Thousand One. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no.
No.
Amendment has not been adopted. Next amendment, Two Zero One Eight, Representative Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Amendment Two Zero One Eight to House Bill One Zero Zero One, and ask for your favorable consideration. And this is the one I described just a moment ago. This is a correction, just getting the word COVID-19 added to the EAU so that we limit that part to this particular issue, COVID-19.
Discussion on the amendment, discussion on amendment, seeing none. All those in favor of the adoption of second reading amendment Number Eighteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The amendment is adopted. House Bill. House Bill One Thousand and One, having been read two separate times. The question is, shall the bill be read a third time? Hearing no objection, it is so ordered. Next bill for our consideration is House Bill One Thousand Two.
House Bill One Zero Zero Two, sponsored by Representative Summers, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates, Prohibition, and Remedies Two, an act relating to the protection of individual rights.
All right, members, we do have amendments, and I just want to clarify with the chief clerk. I have five. There are five amendments. Chairman Olson, I think I have the first amendment is yours. Second reading amendment Number One to House Bill One Thousand and Two.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do move Amendment One here to House Bill Two. Ask for your favorable consideration. This is really just a cleanup amendment. Trying to make sure that the language is all encompassing when we're talking about our mandate to include language on the federal rule, regulation, standard, particularly when we're talking about MSHA, OSHA, that's what we're talking about. This was, again, there's a lot of policy that can be behind this area. Obviously, we've been debating it all day. Similar to the amendment I brought on the previous bill, this isn't a policy consideration, it's just a cleanup. So do ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Discussion on the amendment, discussion, discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, second reading amendment Number One, House Bill One Thousand Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Amendment is adopted. Next amendment. Number Two, Representative Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At this time, I would respectfully withdraw my second reading, second amendment to House Bill One Thousand Two.
Thank you. Number Two is withdrawn. Thank you, Representative Burke. Number Three, Representative Provenza.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, at this time, respectfully withdraw my amendment. Sorry, words are hard today. I am taking back my amendment, so.
Thank you.
Yay.
Would you, would just state the number of your amendment just for the record so that the audience or the listening crowd in the rest of the world hears it?
I am withdrawing House Bill One Oh Two, second reading amendment Number Three.
Thank you very much. Number Three is withdrawn. We're on to number Four, Representative Krego. This is a corrected copy, members, a corrected copy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would move amendment number, second reading amendment Number Four to House Bill One Thousand Two. This is a same song, second verse from earlier today. Essentially, we're trying to insert the identical language from House Bill One Thousand One into House Bill One Thousand Two to address the problem when there is an appeal. The stay language is in this amendment so that while there is a stay in place, employers do not have to choose between enforcing, following federal law or state law. This language gives them the ability to stay out of that conundrum. Would stand for any questions?
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Discussion on amendment Number Four. Discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the adoption of second, my apologies, Representative Yin, for your first time.
Thanks. Just for my first time, I probably will bring a third reading amendment for this because I'm going to clean up language in both bills that are similar, so I would ask you to vote no, but really vote your conscience. I'll bring a third reading amendment, we'll see what it looks like. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Further discussion, further discussion, any member for their first time? Representative Summers, for your first time.
Mr. Speaker, just on and in favor of the amendment.
Any other member for their first time, first time, first time, second time, second time before the sponsor, to the sponsor. Members, we are voting on second reading amendment Number Four, House Bill One Thousand Two. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
Amendment is adopted. Next amendment for your consideration, Five. Representative Heiner.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I find myself the last one on the list to finish up today, and we've had a vigorous discussion. So I respectfully withdraw Amendment Number Five to House Bill One Thousand and Two.
Second reading amendment of Five to One Thousand Two is withdrawn. Thank you, Representative Heiner. House Bill One Thousand and Two, having been read two separate times. The question is, shall the bill be read a third time? Hearing no objection, is so ordered. Chief Clerk, any other things on the desk? Committee announcements, privileges of the floor. Committee announcements, for Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members, your minerals committee scheduled to have a joint interim meeting on the Fourth and Fifth in Rock Springs, and we, due to the length of the special session, we're going to postpone that meeting. It may get postponed all the way into January, looking at the calendars. But members, the bills have already been worked twice, and as usual, they're in very good shape, so we'll be all right. Thank you.
Any other announcements, any other announcements? Mister, anything else on the desk, chief? All right, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I moved at the house and adjourned until eight thirty a.m. tomorrow, the twenty-ninth day of October.
All right, members, well done today. Vigorous debate, again, two days in a row, committee the whole yesterday, second reading today, third reading. It continues. I think I would also anticipate a, one of those unique amendments on third reading, and delete the enacting clause, and and then there will be much broader discussions about the implications of this bill, et cetera. So I thank you for your hard work today. I thank you for continuing to make these ideas better, make legislation better for the citizens of Wyoming. So with that, all those in favor, the majority floor leader's motion that the that the House adjourned until eight thirty a.m., October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The House is adjourned until eight thirty a.m. October thirtieth.